Jake, update.
He has not signed in yet.
Okay. Question. Let's see.
Yes. Looks like Jake's on there now.
Okay, cool. Awesome. Yes, let's do it. All thirty. A call to order, a study meeting this afternoon, Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at four thirty P M. And we are in multi-purpose room. The anchor location right here is the thirty-six hundred Constitution Boulevard, West Valley City, Utah, A four one one nine. We are here. Council members is present except Kenland and Mayor. She excused herself tonight and the admin is here as well with us. Approve of minutes, we have August ninth, twenty twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And I will turn it over to the council for the motion in a second.
Shouldn't approve the August ninth, twenty twenty-two study minutes?
Motion is the second. We have a will, the motion is a law, it's a second. All those are in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So this motion passes unanimously. Good, thank you. Regular meeting, any question about it? You have a chance to review that yet or? No question, move forward. Public parents, we have two public parents tonight. The first one, I think, is the State Patrick and the second one is State Patrick too. So it's Mr. Pye, you want to say anything before State Patrick take over podium?
No, thanks, sir. I think we're good. Steve can, Steve's here with us in person and he can come up anytime he'd like.
Okay, thank you. Now I would turn over to Mr. Patrick, please.
Thank you. We'll pull up our presentation here. Actually, in this first one, we have it's an ordinance change to begin with. And so we can pull up the ordinance if there are specific questions. There are a number of changes that are being proposed as part of this zoning ordinance amendment. So in fact, in your issue paper, you'll see that there are a total of five changes that are proposed. The first two are related. Okay, so the first two are amending the definition of a hospital. And then second, to prohibit hospitals within certain zones. And really, the intention here is that we have certain treatment facilities that handle, for example, detoxification rehabilitation that have, just by the nature that they provide treatment are have been deemed as hospitals. And so, and in effort to really be more restrictive about where those kinds of uses can locate in the city. This would restrict where a hospital can go. So the zones that would still allow hospital will be the C two zone and the city center zone. So you have, for example, Granger Medical, as well as the medical campus there on Thirty-Fifth South that are in those zones. But again, the intent of those first two changes would be to really restrict where those kinds of treatment facilities could be located. The third change has to do with the, what's called the Decker Lake Station overlay zone. So we have an overlay zone that covers the area surrounding the Maverick Center. And as you know, there are a number of restaurants there that serve alcohol. And the state has regulations dealing with the separation of alcohol businesses from what are called community uses or community locations. So things like schools, parks, that sort of thing. And so what we're saying in this third change is that with, at least in that area around the Maverick Center, that we don't want to have those kinds of uses so we don't create conflicts with the existing businesses that serve, that serve alcohol around our entertainment district. The fourth change would be a change actually that the council had required a little bit ago regarding the residential sustainability zone or the R S zone. As the council recalls, you wanted to see that windows and doors built on homes in the R S zone would meet the Energy Star rating. And so that's the fourth change would be to add that regulation. And then finally, the last change has to do with home occupations. And so right now, what the ordinance says in terms of what kinds of a home occupation or a home business you can have is based on the uses that are allowed in the C one zone. And we found that that's been confusing for people because the C one zone allows for retail uses. But then when you read the regulations for home businesses, it doesn't really allow retail. So in one sense, it says you can do retail, but then if you read the regulations further, it says you can't do retail. So this cleans that up by saying that now we're tying the, the uses that you can do in a home occupation or for a home occupation are tied to the residential business zone, which we feel is again more, more aligned with the kinds of uses that would traditionally be seen for a home business. So those are the, the five changes that are proposed for the, this ordinance change.
Give Mr. Patrick, we say that also have any question for him?
I noticed in the minutes from the planning meetings, planning commission. There was some concern about businesses like a home hair salon or nail salon being able to sell products related to hair and nails in their home businesses.
Right.
And, and if you're understanding that that would not be allowed unless they did it online.
Right, tech, technically, that's not allowed currently. I think that probably happens, people probably just don't indicate that on their license and that, that sort of thing probably still happens. But technically, that's already not allowed in the code is to have any kind of retail sales from like a shelf in your home.
And would it be possible for us to amend this, to allow for that kind of retail sales connected with a, a home business service?
We could, yes.
You see any, any problems with doing that or?
It, we would just, I think we'd want to be very specific and because it could be a slippery slope, right? In terms of, and so, you know, maybe if it's in conjunction, like you're saying, with like a hair salon or something like that. And it's, we somehow limit that it's a very, you know, in terms of area, it's a very small quantity somehow.
Yeah. I would support that as long as it was specified to that scenario. So I thought this was. Yeah. As long as the customer's coming for a service and also wants to purchase some product, I think that would be okay.
I need black and white for that. So the owner go out and sell their products, that'd be the problem if they are in service, they serve their customers and they can sell product. Can that be okay, right?
Right.
Are we tracking down?
Are we what?
Are we tracking down?
I still don't understand.
How we drop them, how we find out?
So I guess if they wanted to do that and, and put that in their application, if we allowed it, then we, then, then we would say, yeah, that's okay.
Right.
But if they put that in their application now, we would say, yeah, you can do this as long as you don't do that.
Right.
Okay.
But if we add that to this change where a customer who's receiving this in-home service that's allowed could also purchase related products?
I think I'm supporting that. I'm okay with that.
Sounds like we have at least four that would support that. Can we go ahead and have you put that language in there?
Absolutely.
Oh, by the way, we have Scott Harmon is on, on Zoom, so electronically. Any question for Mr. Patrick?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Scott. But here, my, my question is, Steve, why are you bringing it up this time, five items? Why don't you do it two years ago? Or a year ago? But why you do it right now?
On, on which, which item?
Five items right here, your list is right here.
Yeah, I, I think is just, well, with the R S zone, that's one the council specifically requested. And on the other ones, it's as, as issues come up, as we identify issues, we you know, keep, keep track of those and, and then move those forward through the, the process. So, so the one was one specifically requested by the council. The others are ones that, that staff were suggesting, again, as, as we identify issues.
Okay, so basically you didn't see it before, but now you do see that.
Right.
So you want to bring it up?
Right.
Okay. But I need, any question for Mr. Patrick? If not, you're gonna take the second one, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So I will share my screen here for a minute and review this zone change here. So this is a fairly small property. So the location here you can see is at thirty-nine oh nine, south twenty-two hundred west. The zoning on this property is a or the agricultural zone and the requested zone is the R one eight zone. You can see it's just over half an acre. This image here, you can see there is a home on the property along with the detached garage. And pretty much on all sides, you have homes surrounding this property. Just by way of background for zoning, so that kind of pale green color is the agricultural zone. And then where you have the yellow is either R one eight there on the west. And then you also have R one ten on the north and east of this property. This is the, the concept here. So if, if the applicant here is successful in getting the zone change, they're wanting to keep the existing home on a lot that would be out front. And then they would have a, a new flag lot that would be in the, the back of this. So, and you can see that the, the size of that would be just over twelve thousand square feet, which is the minimum that's required if you're doing a flag lot. So again, there, the, the intent here would be to, again, keep the existing house and then build a new home on the, the flag lot in the back. Just again, for background, so this picture is of the property directly north of this property. This is a picture of the home that's on the property currently. So there's a bungalow that's there now. You'll notice that this particular property does not have curb and gutter. So this is looking south along twenty-two hundred west. And so they would need to install improvements along, along their frontage. It's a little bit tough to see from this, but there is some flaking paint, just basically the homes needing, the existing homes needing some maintenance, as well as the yard obviously is needing maintenance. And then the driveway's in, in poor condition as well. And so for, for those reasons, the development agreement addresses a number of things. So first of all, development agreement requires that they would install curb veteran sidewalk along twenty-two hundred west. They would also replace the driveway. They would also, and you, I'll go back to the aerial image here for a minute. So in addition to replacing the driveway, you'll notice that the detached garage on the property would actually be on the new lot. And so they've also agreed to build a new detached garage on the lot for the existing house. Okay, so that, so now both homes would have a garage. The new home would also meet our previous housing standards. So they've made that commitment as well. Also are committed to essentially replacing the landscape, scaping on that front lot, as well as doing some painting on the, the house that's out front. So it's a combination of maintenance for the existing lot, as well as standards for the new home on the new lot. That, that summarizes this application.
Any question for him? A couple of questions I want to ask you, Steve. First one is the sibling or their relative family members can they live in the back there or, or they just building it, sell it?
My understanding is there, they would be selling the slot, so it's, it wouldn't be a, a family member.
Okay. The second question is kind of comments, it's not a question. We have a high table water in that area. So if they do the basement, so maybe just remind him about a couple of new houses having a problem right now.
Okay.
So gotta be careful with that.
Understood. And certainly that's something we'll look at if, if they're successful in the zone change that they would have to look at soil conditions to determine whether a basement's possible.
I don't know. Engineer did it, I think, west side of this house. They have a circle, kind of like circle about four or five new houses not long, about a year ago. Okay, and I don't think we are responsible for that, but I believe it's a, their engineers, they, they had a problem with that because they did the basement and it didn't do well. Some reason right now a couple of houses is leaking inside their basement. And now they're looking for the builder. And the builder, he ran away. Maybe changed the name and changed the address and the name of the company and everything is, they couldn't fire it. So do you want to say with you about that? Okay?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Frontage on the existing lot, that would that need to go to board of adjustments or does that, does our approval encompass?
I'm glad you brought that up. So that is one other provision, the development agreement. And that is that in the R one eight zone, the minimum frontage requirement is eighty feet. So they're one foot short of that. And so the development agreement, if approved, would grant them that one foot exception for the existing or for the lot for the existing house.
The improvements that they'll need to do along twenty-two hundred, it's hard to tell from the map, but how far south or I mean, obviously they're only going to do in front of there.
Correct.
But where does this settle?
It's, it's intermittent. So at least they'll, they'll be connecting to the improvements directly to the north. So that, that'll be nice that you have a connection. But I believe it's several lots south before you pick up curb and gutter again. I don't remember exactly how many, but it does pick up again further south. Okay, just one other comment, just as a reminder. So at, at the council's request, this will be studied again next week because it involves a development agreement and then voted in two weeks. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-seven, Andy Carroll.
Sir, if you don't mind, I'll be handling this one. I know it's got to end in the list there, but sure. Go ahead. Thank you very much. So, and maybe I can introduce Andy too while he's here, here. So, Mr. Carroll, you may remember we hired on here, it's been at least a couple of years ago, right, Andy?
Not quite, but not quite.
Close.
Yeah.
And the idea at the time was we wanted to use Andy's expertise in helping us with optimizing a lot of our different venues and coordinate those efforts between them, whether that might be the theater or the Maverick Center or other venues along that line. And we've had a little bit of a time difficulty with that just because that was about the time we had hired Andy that COVID occurred. And so we've kind of lived through that as well. But Andy's done a lot of really good background work for us on a lot of other issues. And in fact, you're going to hear about another one of those here later on in the agenda. But for this particular item, Andy's been invaluable in negotiating with the Salt Lake. Was going to call it the organizing committee, but from the last time around, but whatever they're calling themselves now. The committee before the organizing committee really would be sort of the setup. We've been working with Mr. Frazier and other folks that were associated with the Olympics last time around. And we have come together with a draft agreement, which would govern the use of the Maverick Center during the year twenty thirty, if the Olympics are held then and if Salt Lake wins the bid or twenty thirty-four, if Salt Lake were to get that in. And there's some very specific parameters around which that use agreement would be prolonged. So the first one here is that the Olympic committee would have exclusive use of the Maverick Center for however they deem. They were going to use that. And we addressed points of that also later on here during the, the Olympic and the Paralympic Games. It's important to remember that point as well, whether it's in twenty thirty or whether it's in twenty thirty-four. And if you have any questions, by the way, on how that's progressing commentary wise, I've got a little bit of surface knowledge, but you probably have as good a feel for we do whether or if we're going to get it in twenty thirty or twenty thirty-four. The second point, I wanted to make sure we emphasized in, this was a big point of concern for us, but it was a big point of support by the committee folks, which was we wanted Maverick Center to be used in the same way there was in the original Olympics, which was for the gold medal games, the medal games, the semifinals, quarterfinals, all that sort of thing, both for the men's and for the women's. We were sort of jealous of that status from last time around and wanted to make sure that we continued to get that. And we did get that. And only did we get it, but really frankly, it wasn't really a question in their minds. They thought that that's the appropriate place to hold them as well too. So that was a pretty easy point of negotiation. Now that doesn't mean it'll only be the quarter, quarterfinals, semifinals and the gold medal games will have lots of practice or, or preliminary rounds as well, but we wanted those committed by agreement before we moved along. They will pay us a use fee of the Maverick Center for the games. It'll be four million dollars if the games are held in twenty thirty and if we get the bid. And it will be inflation adjusted above the four million if we get it in twenty thirty-four. We did also retain use of our own suite during the Olympic Games. That provides a lot of flexibility for you as a council. And by use of the suite, that doesn't mean we just get free access to it. We still would have to pay for tickets and that sort of thing under whatever structure is decided upon at that point. But we could use them ourselves if we're willing to buy the tickets. We also tried to reserve for ourselves the flexibility of selling or somehow in some financial arrangement gaining financial benefit by those tickets. However, again, the use rules would apply. And sometimes that gets pretty restrictive, sometimes it's very narrow. But the, the point and the, and the desire here was to be able to reserve that right either way, whichever way you as a council would want us to use it or want to use it. And then in addition to that, there has been ten million dollars in funds for improvements and renovations to Maverick Center that have been also approved and dedicated to that. There will actually be even more than that. That's also allocated at the state level, but for purposes of the use agreement, how the committee has influenced, that was their ability to put that into the agreement. So overall, we're very happy with the use agreement. I might also give you a little bit of background on what the committee's desire here is. Once again, they're gathering all this information and trying to get these commitments so they can put a price tag-ish around a bid themselves, right? So they're going around and doing this work with all the potential venues that exist from last time. And they see that, of course, as a huge benefit in terms of securing the bid, the fact that we have all the facilities in place. Most of them have been relatively well maintained and kept and shouldn't take a whole lot of cost, at least comparatively to building it in the first place when the two thousand and two Olympics were here. So they feel like we have a very good chance and opportunity for securing that bid. And, and we, of course, want that here as well. So we're supportive of the agreement as we're proposing it to you. And we're supportive of them as a committee. The relationship has been very good from a working together standpoint. And we look forward to moving it on, hope we get it. Certainly polls have shown here, at least in the last a while, very preliminarily, that the people of the state support having the Olympics back here to the state and at least from our standpoint on staff position, we certainly support that too. That's all I've got commentary wise on that, sir.
Thank you. Any question?
Did you mention that ten million dollars from the state or?
Did I mention this now? Yeah, yeah. And in addition, and appreciate that Lars' point that deserves emphasis, right? And in addition to that, there actually will be more dollars on top of that that we're working, but it's kind of through a different mechanism through the state as opposed to strictly through the committee. So great opportunity for us, great opportunity for the state, and we're happy to see it. Hopefully we get the bid.
So who's the opponent?
I'm sorry, what?
Who's the opponent for?
Uh, great question. There are other bidders right now. We see Calgary, I believe, is probably the most likely bidder. And what's that?
Vancouver and, and then Sapporo, Japan.
And Vancouver and Sapporo are the other two.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
What's the timing of the bid process?
Andy, you might know a little bit, but do you know the timing on bid process right now at all?
They're trying to get the bid in.
Come on, come on up here. So we get you on the microphone. They update us very regularly, but I haven't heard recently.
Yeah, they're trying to get the bid. I believe it's going to be in October and then the executive committee from I O C will review it in December. And then I believe it's going to be February of twenty-three that the I O C votes and makes a determination. Where it's, they may make a decision for twenty thirty and twenty thirty-four at the same time. So they may make, make, they may vote on it and make the announcement at the same time. So we could know both thirty and thirty-four by February, but they haven't made that determination yet. But that should be February of twenty twenty-three that they made at least a determination on twenty thirty.
Right.
Any question?
Thank you.
Yeah. Any question for Andy before he stepped up? Also, one question for you though. How do you feel about, is the good feeling about our bid?
I feel very good about twenty thirty-four. The LA has twenty twenty-eight. So the question, of course, is, is I O C going to give the United States back-to-back Olympics? And I know that Frazier and, well, I'm sorry.
Say that's tough.
That is, yeah.
Pro to ho.
Yeah. So and particularly since there's going to be twenty twenty-six FIFA World Cup will be in the U S. Mexico and Canada will be North America. Then you have the twenty-eight Summer Olympics in L A. So we are very, I know Salt Lake organizing committee is working very, very hard to get twenty thirty, but it's, there are some, some challenges to that. So it may, it'll be thirty or thirty-four. There's really only two of, there's three countries bidding right now, so us, Canada and Japan. So we, we've got pretty good odds, but the question, of course, is, is thirty too close to twenty twenty-eight in the eyes of the I O C?
Yeah. We would say all things equal, twenty thirty-four probably would be the more likely bid. But we have such a strong position here. We're hopeful we can use that, leverage that as the, as the impetus to get it here in twenty thirty.
I think we'd have a great game, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You so much. Nico, if you see Scott, he put aside for raising his hand, let us know. Thank you. I don't be the resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-eight. And I'm going to be mark no. Well, Wayne, you want to say anything before he take over or? oh, Wayne, you want to say anything before he take over or what?
Yes, please. Uh, thank you, sir. So just then this is just an introductory comment, maybe it's coming up. And that is, as you know, over the years, the concert industry changes. It's very dynamic. It has its ups, has its downs. Uh, again, as I mentioned earlier, with uh in connection with Andy, we're always looking at ways to try to optimize and make our operations better and coordinate better with each other. This is a proposal we'll bring into you that we highly support, but it also brings with it certainly some commitment that we haven't made before. So we're with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Council. Good afternoon. Mark Nord, Economic Optimization Agency Director. Um, excited to be here with this proposal that we have before you. Um, as Wayne mentioned, we hired Andy about eighteen months ago, and he's been doing a fantastic job at looking at ways to take our venues and arenas to the next level. And one of the things that he um was able to point out, clearly start to get some backing behind through some market studies was that the amount of content that we have at the Maverick Center could be improved. We just weren't having enough shows. And what's what that means is if we are able to put a series of shows together in a season similar to like you see at USANA, we can actually go and get corporate partners to sell and the naming rights and participation and suites through those corporate partners. So um putting together a season of events in in the year ahead allows us to go on actively market and promote these shows and put together some real good corporate partnerships. So what the limitations that we had with that was the expenditure of capital to essentially book these shows in 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 advance. And what we're proposing today is the solution through that. The Maverick Center currently sits within an RDA area, and so we're able to utilize RDA funds to do a revolving line of credit. This line of credit will be used to pay the down payment or the advance fee to book the shows. It will not be covering all of the artist fees, but a percentage of them. And will allow us to put together a season that we can go in and then market to corporate partners and sell suites, sell the naming rights, so all the uh all the preemptive stuff um in the season beforehand. So we're excited about this notion. It will allow us to, one, um, bring a lot more concerts and and there and also bring a lot more revenue and optimize that arena. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council for any questions.
Any question for him?
Um, if not, I can have a question for you, Mark. Um, we're gonna put that one one mill. How long you think we're gonna take it back?
Yes, this loan is proposed to be paid back throughout the the year. It'll be, let's say, we have a show and it costs a hundred thousand. Once that show is concluded, it will be paid back. And so it will be a revolving cycle. It won't be one million at one time.
Right.
It'll be up to a million dollars. Um, but I don't imagine that all one million will be all out at once. It will just be a continual um usage. But at the end of the year, we'll reconcile accounts and have all of it back. So year one.
Year one?
Mm hmm.
What you really use for this money?
It's the booking, the agent. So let's say we find, or not the agent, excuse me, the act. So let's say we have a concert, um Justin Bieber.
Okay.
We need to book him so he can set his schedule for the next following year. We use this money to book that date. And it's that's simply it. It's just locking in that date. So then we can say, okay, Justin Bieber is part of a ten performance season that we can go out and say this West Valley season concert series promoted by Ford, you know, trucks is brought to you at the Maverick Center. But we need to have those acts booked in advance in order to go to the corporate partners and be like, hey, Ford, little Caesar's America first. Will you guys partner with us on this new season?
Are you gonna bring Scorpion?
Scorpion? Okay, I'll try. I don't book these councilmen, but I will. I will put in a good word.
I'm just.
He won't vote for unless it's scorpion. Okay, deal. We'll have to try.
Change, man.
I'm gonna point to Andy on that because Andy's our talent. I uh he's the guy that knows how to do all that stuff.
Uh, maybe I will, you know, I'm saying. I came here at eighty and eighties, late eighty, and so Scorpion and Juan Chovy and those guys are very popular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that's um going back to, we want to offer a variety of shows and really get a lot of multitude of different demographics coming to the Maverick Center. I think we've had a great history at the Maverick Center. What we're going to do here with this is just get further exposure, bringing a lot more bands. And these bands are going to be all different types, rock, hip hop, dance, all of it. Um, because we have a great arena there and everybody that comes to the to the Maverick Center usually leaves and says that it was a great show. It's it's set up very well for concerts. Um, so I think just having more content will further expose what a great concert venue it is.
By implementing this approach, do you have a projection of or at least a goal of how much you'd like to increase revenue by doing this one?
That's that's hard to pin down in just a lump sum. With this, we're at least shooting for ten acts is the goal for the year. Um, with revenue, um, it's going to be tied up in so many different verticals. So you have concessions, you have corporate partnerships, you have suites, ticket sales, parking. But certainly, if it we would like to bring back to council after this year and a thorough report showing all these verticals over a year on over a year um basis, so you can see that did we achieve our goals by increasing revenue? We feel very confident we'll do that, but we'll definitely have a report at the end of the year to show here were the verticals before and here were after this additional ten shows.
How long would the live credit be available?
Uh, we're doing this for a yearly basis right now. Just this is the first pilot year. And if it's successful and and we we bring you back to the council and everybody sees that this was a great um proposal and we did achieve the goals, I think we'd like to keep it going. But right now, this is just for the year. For the upcoming season, sorry.
I think I'm a little hesitant to use RDA funds for something that doesn't have a direct correlation to community or economic development. I if, and I understand what you're saying, you can't uh pick the cart before the horse and bring in these corporate sponsorships without a solid schedule. I just, I'm a little hesitant. I think there's pure community development or economic development that we could consider uh where it has a direct correlation, but how the rest of the council does.
That's a real valid point and concern. And of course, with any dollars we're using um from city funds and coffers, our thinking along this line here is that because RDA dollars do have a more restricted uh use in terms of number of different ways we can spend them. And the fact that it is a less risky or less, uh, what's another way to put it? Another
Low risk.
Less uh less risky as said, but also less controversial might be another way to put it than say if we came to proposing, hey, we want to take a million dollars of general fund dollars, uh, you know, that probably that's probably something we'd have a harder time recommending to you. And then other funds that we'd have such as something like impact fees, for example, wouldn't even be legal just because of the restrictions of the uses that they have. So if we're gonna do this out of the different pots that we are able to access, it seems like the best one. But that doesn't uh eliminate the point that you're making. Yeah, for sure. There's always this choice of how can we use these funds to the best uh available use? What's the best projects? What are the best programs for sure? So good, good concern to have.
Oh, here, Mark, I think the best way you can, I don't know, maybe not the best way, but I think maybe you can uh send out an email and explain to your plan and your projection. So that the council members, we feel comfortable before we vote. You know, say before, from now until until next Tuesday.
Certainly happy to do that. That's what the council wants.
Mark, is there a direct relation between this fund and economic development?
Absolutely. Um, when you look at um people who come to the concerts, our our goal with that whole entertainment plaza and around that area and frequently around Fairborn. Um, our goal is to increase um exposure, not only for people coming in, visiting the concert, but you know, when they come in, they eat dinner before. Um, I'm hoping to bring in with these concerts, a lot of people who otherwise have never come to West Valley City or haven't been here in a long time since we've done all this transformation that the councils uh put forward. So um the direct benefit to economic development is we're going to be bringing in a lot more people to that area, which translates to obviously more debt, more dollars. And secondly, there's that non tangible, harder to pin down benefit of if I can get um a company to come and partner with us on a on a series and we start selling them on seeing the vision that is West Valley City, we hopefully have a chance to relocate them or get them excited about billing here. So I mean, it's the same way we use it now. We're we're currently doing this already. But content is really what we need. With only a few shows of the year, we're limited. But if we can have a few more shows, um, we can certainly increase our exposure and get a lot more of a broader audience. Like if I have a CEO of a company that happens like Scorpion, he's going to come to Maverick Center for that show, and I'm going to have a chance to sit with him and show him what's going on over at the at Fairborn and get that exposure. So um, where this is a loan and we're getting the funds back within a year, it's a very easy um low risk way for us to kind of get a big, big bang out of the buck.
I think also color dominant effect, you know, when you the big band, they come in here, you're gonna do like hotel business and restaurant business and other retail business. So I think that's a work for the community and the economic development in that area. Uh, but you're gonna put it together, realize in the detail and then and then uh projection.
Yep.
Then so we can look at or can can vote.
Okay.
Take you from from today to next to next Tuesday. Any question for Mark? If not, we're gonna move to resolution uh twenty two dash one twenty nine. Thank you, Mark. And I'm gonna be Jake. Um, Wayne, you want to say anything before Jake take over?
Yes, in fact. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm trying to remember. Yeah, it's Jake here today. No, yes, yeah. Okay, there he is. So yes, I did want to make quick introductory comment, which is this uh this project really addresses a few different programs that we're working on here in the city. First and probably the most obvious would be the HVAC system at the cultural center needs to be replaced. It's uh replacing or this would replace the original one, which not only is worn out over the couple of decades now it's been there, but it also doesn't service all the finished square footage. So it's also overloaded in terms of capacity. So that's the first reason we're replacing that. Second reason is, and we have talked about this before in other council meetings, this is one of the energy efficiency project um aims and targets that we have tried to combine from a priority standpoint. Where are those areas and facilities in the city where we're replacing equipment anyway? And how do we do it in a way that would help us with our twenty thirty net zero emissions goal as well as reduce costs and energy usage? And that in that vein. So from that standpoint, we're really addressing two programs here at the same time. Another third mention I wanted to make to you is even though we have talked about this before in a couple of different things, uh, whether it's cultural center itself or whether it's energy efficiency, net zero sorts of goals, this is one of the uh items on uh Nancy's Parks and Rec list for one time program mod consideration as well as I actually got double counted this year. It's also on Jake Arslanian's uh facilities program on list, too. So anyway, that introduction wise, Jake, I'll uh leave it to you to talk about the particular bidders and the structure of the what we're doing specifically.
Thank you, Wayne. Uh, Mayor Protham and Council, uh, appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. Uh, before you is the resolution awarding a contract for six hundred and fifty two thousand and seven dollars to American Chiller Mechanical Service. And uh, Wayne said it all. I don't have to repeat everything. But one thing is that this unit is going to replace both the crossroads, the biggest space in our cultural center, and also the basement east portion of the building that was occupied by the police department. Right now, if you are a visitor of our cultural center, there is no cooling in that basement where the police used to reside because the machine died or wanted to be shot and dead like a horse because it was not functioning properly. There was no parts any longer to support it. So we elected to let it go because we didn't want to throw good money after that. Waiting for this over a year and a half right now with COVID, many of the HVAC contractors were very hesitant in bidding a project with large equipment, such as the chiller in this building because they could not guarantee when that product is going to show up. Uh, some of them used to say three to six months. Now we're saying nine months to a year for this product to show up. So we have to be proactive on this. Our facilities HVAC folks are very working very hard at keeping the cultural center uh HVAC system running and uh great hall. And um we are struggling because there's no longer parts to sustain that equipment. And as Wayne stated, one of our first objectives is to replace this unit with a unit that is very efficient operationally, very efficient in usage of the utilities, maybe gas and and electricity. And we are also looking for it to be efficient for the serviceability of the equipment for the longevity. So when you have a unit that has all this efficiencies in it, it's not going to all uh help us only in uh reducing our carbon footprint of usage of the utilities, but also it's going to help us in future of the maintenance of this product. So there was four, there actually there was five bidders. Again, I was doing this almost a year and a half now. The first four bids just dropped. They, after they gave us bids, they called and said, sorry, Jake, we cannot promise you anything. Instead of ruining our relationship, we're just gonna drop our contract. All four of them did that. So again, a month and a half ago, I got my courage, went out. All of these, by the way, um the contractors that are in our issue paper, they are on the state contract. So I went to our state state purchasing agent, I said, I'm having an issue. This unit is dead. I need at least four or five companies to bid this job. So they gave us the five, one of them dropped off and the four. Before you, as you could see, there is a big price difference from almost a million dollar to down to the six hundred and fifty two. So we vetted all of them and went to the state asking about American Chiller. They've been using them quite often uh as of late because they have the buying power of the equipment and they have more uh time in. Again, this is tongue in cheek, timing to provide the equipment in good time. So our goal is that the equipment will be purchased hoping that it arrives by February or March. And until then, we are retrofitting all the piping, all the electrical and providing all the up front uh retrofits before this equipment shows up. And then we're going to use a week to take the old rooftop units off, install the chiller, install the new equipment and have the system running by next summer. Until then, our facilities division is working very hard. I mean, it's easy to heat up a building. We have boilers, we have all the avenues to heat up a building. Cooling it is the challenge. So we're hoping that we will make it till winter comes, hoping a couple more months. And then we are starting to retrofit all the auxiliary parts before the main chiller show up. So that's before you're hoping that we could succeed with our plan and uh we were very encouraged by the amount of the six hundred and fifty two thousand. Uh, and again, we the units that we are expecting to be installed are energy efficient, control efficient, footprint efficient, because these are replacing units that are approximately fourteen feet wide by seventy feet long. And this new unit will be only eight feet wide and eight feet long. And you see the footprint alone is going to reduce us our energy consumption. So we hope we could do it. If nothing else, for Nancy's peace of mind and all those visitors that visit our cultural center, including our council. When you're there, we don't want to embarrass you with having a hot building. Any questions?
Any question for him?
It's anticipated lifespan of this.
It's a York equipment like any uh uh HVAC system, they're fifteen years. It's a York equipment like any uh, uh HVAC system, their fifteen year life expectancy. With York. We get another five years of because of the name and the quality of of the equipment and our in-house HVAC specialist is specialized. He has specialized in York equipment. So the maintenance that we do help expand the life of. The equipment. So we're hoping fifteen to twenty years. And not to say the equipment that we had did not. Perform properly. It's twenty year old equipment, but like any. Component, they become obsolete in a couple of years. So you're struggling to keep that equipment going. But with York, they have their American made hundred percent and they have. That contingency in place with for the parts for long term.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
For for Wayne on the finance part of this. So, and this might be part of the. What we were talking about doing a. S- special session related to finance. So when we have large expenditures like this and there's others on here. Um, but we don't have them in the budget technically. What line item are these?
So there's two um. Things that are pertinent to you guys for consideration wise, as you'll see them in appearance. First, you'll see it here, just like you are in the forty five funding source account numbers you'll see on the issue paper. Indicates what fund it'll come out of lineup wise, which is the capital improvement line. But the second place you'll see it. So you're given your, you're given your approval or consideration of it. In this setting right here, when it isn't already in the budget. Uh, which basically gives us the authority to go ahead with the project. And then you do the formal budget opening. On that quarterly basis, you'll see it again show up in there. And so that's how, that's the two places you see it.
And I think you mentioned at the at regular meeting that. That that's an option. We could put these upfront in the budget and it's capital expenditure.
Yes, yeah.
We just choose not to do that.
Right. And the, the reason we chose not to do that this year is because. We have a lot more resources and I'll talk a little bit more about this when we get with the fleet uh, pieces that are coming up here, although I can talk about this as well now. We've got a very healthy fund balance. We've also got a very healthy capital improvement uh, balance right now. And we have a list that's. Fifty long. So normally in a, in a budget year, that list is five long and we have two million dollars or whatever, you know, to consider that. So we would have included it in the budget in normal year, but because of the length and the quantity uh, of the items here this year, I thought it would be a better. And of course, not just I thought, we talked about this during the budget process. But we thought it would be a better process with more examination to do it this way because you'd have more consideration as opposed to just approving. Whatever was going to happen in those program mods in like a February through May kind of a time. But it is outside a, a normal process and in a normal year, you probably wouldn't do this. If we, if we go through this year and we decide we like that. Because of whatever reason, there's more examination or it gives you more flexibility. We um, are always looking at ways to modify the budget process too, so we could include it, make it a part of the regular budget process.
I have one question for you Jake. Um, yeah, you see that four bits right here. They all want the lowest, you know, close to two hundred thousand dollars. Um. Did you study about this company or did they do any job around here or cities here in this valley?
Good question, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, as I said, I've vetted all of them. One of them, American Mechanical System, we work with quite often throughout the city. So I knew at least one of them out of the four bidders. I did not know very much about the American Chiller. But I extensively asked the state purchasing agent about them. The state uses them quite often. Uh, as a state contractor, because all these uh, companies are in our state contract. The state does not have to go and rebid or re uh. Put it out to bid with all the contractors. Those who they know that works very best for them, they automatically use them again. So they assured me that American Chiller is a good company and has done several of this type of. Because our equipment is large, equipment for the state of Utah uh, uh, buildings.
Thank you. Maybe this question for Wayne, maybe um, how we do with the you uh. Uh, UCCC there Wayne, maybe you can give us later, not today, but maybe later, see how they. They performing over there. You know what I'm saying?
Yep, yeah. We do that at least two or three times a year and we can do it again. Um, so if you'd like to do in the near future too.
Absolutely. Great. Let me make it even, they break it even or under or above, you know, anything. Okay, any question for Jake and Wayne? If not, we're gonna go to uh, the next item at uh, resolution twenty two dash one thirty. Thank you Jake, uh, Eric.
One day, uh, Eric needs no introduction for me. It's a pretty straightforward project, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so we've uh. We've had uh, some uh, complaints and, and concerns about the, the school zones on forty one hundred south, specifically at Accord Way and. And Montea Drive. Um, the one at Monte has been on my radar for quite a few years. Uh, it's. Quite old and the equipment is not very visible to the driving public as the roads changed, the characteristics and the traffic volumes have increased. And just the geometry of the road, it makes it difficult to see that crosswalk when you're traveling eastbound. Um, so compliance as far as crosswalk. Com- uh, driver compliance was stopping for pedestrians is sometimes quite low. Um, I know the police department has done several uh, crosswalk operations there. Um, to try to bring um, more visibility to it. So in an effort to uh. Improve the safety and avoid potential problems, um, I'd like to reconstruct that crossing with a, a pedestrian hybrid beacon. It uh, used to be called a hawk signal. It's the same thing we have out in front of Granger High School on thirty six west. Um, so it'll operate similar to that. So at Monte away drive, that would be a brand new one. Um. And it operates like a traffic signal. The crossing guards would push the button and they. Get a red ball, red traffic signal for the, for the traffic. So they'd stop. The, the benefit of this too is outside of school zone hours. Um, other pedestrians can use it just like anybody else and uh, they'll be able to stop traffic and cross safely. Um, at uh, Accord Way, we're going to do something similar. However, there's already some equipment there. Um, in the. When we reconstructed that section of forty one hundred south, we used uh. Something that you dot had in their plans. Um, it was kind of a compromise as far as. School zones and, and, and stopping traffic outside of make being, being more visible outside of school zone hours. Um. It hasn't been very clear to the traveling public. It's a little unexpected and so uh, we've observed. Some confusion with pedestrians and drivers on what those, those signs mean and that signal means. So we're going to retrofit that existing. Um, hardware to operate as a, as a pedestrian hybrid beacon as well.
Any question for him?
Just the one on that. So the school zone will be removed.
Well, the, the reduced speed zone will be removed. Um, typically you wouldn't have a, uh, reduce the speed for at a traffic signal. Um. Because the traffic signal controls the flow of traffic, right? They have to stop for a red signal. Um, so it actually improves traffic flow while improving safety for, for the school children. Um, they don't have. Drivers don't have to s- slow down for, you know, watch for the yellow flashing lights, then also see a red. Red traffic signal, right? Um. So, so it's a little safer, but it also um, increases the traffic flow through the area. And we'll still have crossing guards there for the, because they are elementary school crossings.
I have one question for you though. Um, you don't have to answer to me today. Be later to five, but if you have on your head. Your head, you can pop out, you know what I'm saying? You know what? Decal Lake land. We have four schools. Right adjacent each other.
Right.
Uh, and they have a hall and a couple and a back that you purchase another building right here. So two buildings in this side. Two buildings in this side, that side. And so many kids, I know we had uh. Was it the uh, monitors last time? We put out there and check the speed.
Yeah.
So you meant, um, how the, the turn, I mean, how the thing turn out right now is the. What the next step you're gonna do?
Well, we, we worked closely, myself and Detective Millet have worked closely with those schools um, to, to try to help the situation. We've got a guard out there. Um, I think it's Vanguard Academy is the one that they park on the east side and they cross over.
Right.
Um, so we have a crossing guard for that. Um, we have the traffic signal that they utilize at Research Way in Decker. Um, so ninety percent of the traffic that goes down that road during a typical school day is, is school traffic. Um, dropping people, dropping kids off back and forth and whatnot. Uh, most, that's a pretty low volume road outside of school. Um. So the people there should be aware of the school situation. Uh, we haven't had any um, complaints or. Contact over the last year. Um, as far as needing to make changes or wanting to reevaluate. Um, we did. Do some observations over the last year and things seem to be operating okay. And it's just like any other school situation, it's going to be congested. During that drop off and pickup time.
So you think um. Crossing cars will tackle that problem? So we don't need to do this.
Yeah, so far it's been working well. As far as I know, I haven't had any, anybody recently co- contact me from my schools or, or public.
Okay, thank you. Any other question for you? If not, I think you are not. Thank you. Dan Johnson, you want to say something before Dan take over?
Eric, the fleet manager. But yes, uh, Eric, why don't you come on up if you want to, but yeah, let me introduce if I might circle. Yeah, it does say Dan Johnson out there. I know. Um, so again, uh, Eric's going to go over about four fleet items here with you. And to Will's question earlier, this is a good place to kind of talk about how um. Purchases are made and how that works itself through the budget process. So you'll see on all four of these. The proximate or the immediate place from which the purchases are made, whether that's thirty six fund, whether that's forty five fund. Thirty six fund being stormwater utility, forty five fund being capital improvement or capital replacement lines. So that shows you exactly where it's being spent for when we buy, you guys authorize the purchase. But you'll see them again in the budget openings if and when. There are other fund transfers that enable those purchases. So like, for example, we were speaking earlier about. Um, our annual fleet purchase, which usually is mostly made from general fund. Unreserved fund balance. And that's why it shows up in the quarterly uh, opening. But there are other sources from which those same transfers. Can happen and therefore you will see them in the budget quarterly. Like for example. Um, you'll see them come for this F five fifty that's being bought for fire will come out of wildland fire. Funds that get transferred to the capital, a fund to purchase or um. The, the sweeper is a good example, but that's coming out of stormwater funds. Lots of times we'll, you'll see in here like a street sweeper that comes out of class C road funds. That then get transferred into the capital uh, replacement capital fund. So that's kind of how the flow works, but also why you will see it at the particular places you do. Either here as an actual single item for your consideration, approval and understanding, question and depth. Or in that overall list, you'll see later on when you see the board quarterly budget. So with that then Eric, let's talk about the actual equipment.
The only night that you can come to a council meeting and talk about the F word fleet. So this first one is just a street sweeper. We have four of them in the city. They try to sweep uh, every street in the city eight times a year. And we replace these, we were doing one, trying to replace one every year. We decided to try to spread that out a little bit and we're going to try to go every other year. So we're getting a trade in. On this, I think we are receiving.
Hundred and six for the trade in?
Yeah, one oh six on the trade in. So that leaves us with the total of two thirty four. Three fifty or three eighty five. We got lucky. They had one that somebody canceled. And if you do approve it, we will be able to get it this year instead of. My next issues I got to talk to you about is the thirteen to eighteen month delay on getting parts and cars. So if you approve that, that's what we'll be doing. Any questions on the sweeper?
Any questions then?
I don't know much about the lifeline of a sweeper, um, but it says the life of up to eight years, but we're, we're replacing a twenty seventeen. Sweeper, which is being traded in.
We're doing that to try to recoup some of the cost on the trade in. You know, we're not, we're, they're not falling apart.
Right.
But I mean, they're starting to cost us a little bit more on maintenance. It's, it's a harsh environment. It's a really strong vacuum and they're sucking up dirt and gravel. And it just goes through that stuff and it, it roads the tanks and the, the bins in the back. It's a good time. I'm a little hesitant on going this every other year, but uh, that's what they want to do. So we're going to try it. I hope it doesn't bite us in the butt on the, the maintenance side.
Yeah, I think I, I have a similar to that, uh. With uh, Weston just says, that just, I, I, I remembered. So this one is the two twenty seventeen. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, very quick. Uh. How many we have by chance?
Four.
Four. So every two years, no, every two year, we're gonna.
Replace one of the four.
Replace one of one of the four.
Yep.
Got it.
Eric, we talked a little bit about what we were doing just because Scott and Will weren't here in the last.
Well, we were going every year. We were rotating them over that quick and they were giving us. A pretty good, I would say almost fifty five thousand dollars more on the trade in. Uh, we're just going to try to stretch that out and. You know, it's just, it's everything. We're having problems getting things, the new emissions programs that are coming out on these vehicles. Not only do the truck have emissions, now the motor that runs the, the vacuum, it has emissions. So all that stuff is, it's going through the roof. So we're just trying to spread out the cost where we don't have to do it as often.
Which is good information to have anyway, but the other reason I wanted Eric to kind of go over that and, and he alluded to it and, and it's great. I'm glad he is, is that. We'd like to try different things. We try, we're operating right there on the edge of what's the most efficient. We think we can get a little more here or there. And we like to have the flexibility to try that. But if it doesn't work, we may come back to you next year and say, yeah, no, what? Guess what? The replacing them every year was the better way to go.
Yeah, and I.
Like that.
I feel like that might be where we are.
Yeah, but we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
So right now we have a, a twenty seventeen and eighteen and nineteen and a twenty.
Yep.
We didn't buy one last year.
No, we have a, what is it Eric? We have a. Twenty one. Well, it's, it's weird too, because we're getting them. You know, like, so this will be a twenty two, but we're, we won't even receive it till twenty three.
Right, okay.
So you kind of have that gap there.
So we're just starting this every other year.
No, I think, no, we had a twenty. I think our last one was twenty. We have a two thousand twenty, uh, nineteen and eighteen and then the seventeen.
Did that answer your question Lars or were you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it seems like if, if we buy this one this year, wait two years to buy the next one and then we'll be creating a, a twenty eighteen.
Yep.
In twenty twenty four. So so that being five years old now that our oldest one is six years old.
And that is if we can get, if we can get one. And if.
Now let us know.
If we can even get a vehicle. If we can even get a vehicle. That's where it's, it's really becoming tough. Okay, moving on to the next one, if you don't have any other questions.
Actually, a comment, another question for you, Eric, um. But actually, I, I, I see them quite often in Joseph Field, so I grew. Real clean.
You do see him there a lot?
Yeah, so a real clean deer, yeah.
That's his department. He takes care of all that. He makes sure the streets get done eight times a year.
Yeah, stop size still there, streets very clean. So that's good. All right, next item. Twenty two dash. One thirty two.
Okay, this one is to replace five Toyota Camry hybrids. Uh, they will be used by the, uh, detective division of the police department. We have had nothing but good luck with these cars. They're very low maintenance, very good on fuel. Um, and I, I think they fit what they're doing very well.
And we get good resale value.
And, and especially lately, we are getting a ton. Even our Corruses that we trade in with a hundred and thirty thousand miles on them are bringing back seventy five hundred, eight thousand bucks. And I think that comes back to what I was saying, it is hard to get vehicles, so people are having to do other things. This time we did list, um, what we're gonna spend after the fact too. So we'd put the upfitting cost on there, so you have a, a better understanding of that. So that's what it takes to make one of them a full blown police unit for detectives.
I might add another comment too, advantage of these has been unlike. Some of the other public safety vehicles where we've had, uh, brand turnover and how they do it, what they build, what they'll do for fleet cars. That sort of thing. We've seen larger increases percentage wise in, in price, but these ones are really still. Pretty close to what they were per copy back when we first started doing this.
Yeah.
They were twenty three, twenty four thousand each back ten years ago when we first started doing this and. And they're still at twenty six, that's pretty good.
And the, the dealer at Tony DeVino, they actually let us piggyback on the church, the LDS church. On their order, they said the church needed hundred and fifty. Well, now they only need hundred and forty five, cause we got five of them.
Um, any question for Eric about this? Well, I have a comment for you, Eric, um. I didn't realize until I took that, uh, I ran a car, we rode from here to, uh. Uh, Houston, Oregon, the last few days and, um, surprised me. I spent only seven, seventy dollars for gas from here to Houston, Oregon. It shocked me.
Were you in a hybrid?
Yep.
Yeah, I.
It's ran well and it's just, it shocked me only seventy dollars.
I really think it's.
Oh, oh, for one way, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
One way, yeah, that's so much less expensive.
Yep.
Gas.
Yeah, we've really not had any issues maintenance wise, anything on them.
Yeah.
Few recalls, that's kind of a pain, cause you have to run them to the dealers, leave them there, come back, but that's with every manufacturer.
Okay, if not, next item G, twenty two dash one thirty three.
Okay, this is just one big purchase from Ford, um, this includes. The thirteen patrol SUVs, one Ford Lightning F one fifty. Uh, one F, or excuse me, four F one fifties and that'll be three for PD and one for fire. And then a Ford Transit van for the, uh, family fitness center. We got lucky, we kind of have a, an earmark on the. Thirteen SUVs, the state of Utah canceled some of their order. And we have a pretty good relationship with Ford, so they called us first before they called anybody else and offered them vehicles to us. So if you do approve it, we should be able to have these by the end of the year. Where. Normally they came out a couple of weeks ago and they told us to plan on thirteen to fifteen months going forward on ordering. And that's not the same for retail as it is for fleets. They just. I mean, it's obvious, they're making their money on the retail side and. You know, they don't make as much as they do with fleet, so that's the side they're gonna cater to.
And these are all replacements.
Well, we have, we have the one is gonna be a new, the, the Ford Lightning. We wanna put that into our fleet and start evaluating that. Um. It's, it's the way of the future, it's, it's coming, whether we like it or not, it's, it's gonna be part of it. This has a really neat feature where, say if, if I drive it home. I can put in my address and, and geofence on this program that, hey, when I'm plugged in here. I need a report of how much it costs to charge here. So then I can give it to Wayne and he can reimburse me. On the, you know, on your fuel, so that we're not just having everybody charge it on their dime.
So, uh, the existing vehicles will be auctioned or they traded in or?
Well, and you probably don't know this, but some of these vehicles will have, they'll go down and go to auction. There's other ones that will go down into what's called the lunar, that's a low use, never replace again list. And that's just like spares and pool cars. Um, we have line cars for PD, so we end up having about sixty of them around the city. And that, that kind of feeds that.
Just Eric, why we didn't have, uh, we didn't have a hybrid in here. Can we, future, can we use those cars for, uh, for this department?
Not, not really.
How come?
We don't, they don't make one with what we need in that right now.
It's mostly associated, uh, around the use like Eric's talking about. But the Camry hybrids are great for detectives or even some other kind of light use, but you can't use them for patrol, they're running them over medians there. And high speed, high speed pursuits, you know, that sort of thing, you, you need a different type of vehicle for that.
And the support's not there, Tom, for like the things that we need to put in there, the cages and the partitions and the consoles. There's no one that manufactures that stuff.
But like, uh, you know, pumpkin police. He doesn't have to need, you know, he doesn't have to need those things. He can drive a hybrid car and go around. Check them out and see how things going with the city, who pop on the grass, who pop on the curve, on the sidewalk. So it's not a big job for those guys.
Yeah.
Saying?
Yeah. And we, I mean, we're trying to buy, um, the smallest, you know, most of efficient. Vehicles we can for them, them kind of positions, we have them in the Ford Escapes. Uh, little four cylinder vehicles. But they, they didn't at that time when we have bought their vehicles, they didn't have hybrids available. In that smaller SUV, but we can look at, at them in the future.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, it, it's cheaper and, uh, less gas, uh, to spend.
If it's cheaper in the overall sense, we'll do it and we'll bring it to you.
Yeah.
It's a great question and we do look at that, Eric will come and talk to me and say, hey, you know, uh. This is a new type of car or the use of this particular position has changed or, you know, whatever. And so certainly we definitely have high incentive to. Get the cheapest, uh, vehicle that would work, that will work for whatever the purpose is. And one of the reasons for that is we're still trying. We're still trying to replace our fleet on a, on an ongoing basis. At almost the same level that we were fifteen, twenty years ago. Fifteen, twenty years ago, we were spending a million dollars a year. Now we're spending a million and a quarter. But ish, but we've got way more population, we've got more police officers, we've got more parks, we've got more everything. And the vehicles are more expensive.
Got a lot.
So, so we're still trying to keep that to that general amount. And so that gives us actually real high incentive to look at things like you're talking about, Tom, so. Yeah, if we see those in ways that will work both in terms of purchase and the maintenance costs over time, yeah, we'll.
And then we also look at the resale too.
And resale, yeah. And hybrids have been really good.
And we do, Tom, we do have eleven hybrids in the PD fleet that we've tested out. We, we jumped on them at the first year and we had a couple of them that were down at the shop. Couple of them were down for more than two, three months at a time with hybrid battery problems. Since then, we've, we've had decent luck with them. There's not a ton of savings on them. Not as much as I was hoping, maybe one or two miles a gallon.
Versus just like the four cylinder escape.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just something like maybe pumpkin police, like, you know, a community, uh, something culture, community police. Officers, something like, kind of like a light job for them, it's not very heavy.
Yep. Yep.
Just, just an idea, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Yeah. Okay, if you don't have any questions for him, uh, get the next one, H, um, twenty two dash one thirty four.
Okay, this one is an F five fifty and it's gonna be used by the fire department in their, uh. What do you call it, the wildland division? Where they take this truck out of state, they generate revenue from it and the people that are on it. And it's replacing a truck, it doesn't have a lot of miles on it, but it only is an extended cab. And for them guys to ride, four guys in one of them trucks. In an extended cab is, it's not fair to them, so. And I know we put the smallest guys back there and they still complain. But there's been a couple of times where I've just noticed where. Guys are bigger and they can't even get their legs down in there, so they're sitting in there this way. It's, it's not safe, it's, it's not fair to them to be sending them that far and. So this will be paid for by the wildland funds. This is one that we had to get off the lot. Cause they, they don't have any, they will not open the order bank. For the F series, uh, super duty trucks, so like an F three fifty, five fifty. Until the end of October and they're planning on closing the order window by November fifteenth. And that's all they're gonna make for this two thousand twenty two model year. And so when you do order it at that point, then you're planning on another thirteen months of waiting, thirteen to fifteen months. So we would like to buy that one off the lot.
Any question for him? If not, well, thank you so much, Eric.
All right.
So happy ending, four items on a resolution.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you. All right, uh, concern agenda is a normal stuff, uh, Wayne?
Yes, sir, uh, there's three items, there are all three of them right away purchases and warranty deeds. One of them's associated with the overlay project on thirty one hundred, the other two are associated with that Hawk install over on forty one hundred. The most expensive one is a little different. The other two are like nine hundred and eleven hundred or something like that, but the third one's fifty nine hundred dollars, but that's just, you know, what the properties were.
Okay, any question for him for these three items, or if not, we're gonna jump over to communication. All right, let go, uh, mental health. I believe there's a surgeon called Scott, uh, Scott, uh, Arnold. Yeah, you wanna say something before?
Yeah, please, just real quick, just for introduction, uh, standpoint, just very glad to have Scott here, we don't get to see him too often. It's nice to see his face and, and, uh, his support here with him, who you have seen before, but has always got great. Information for us, so we're glad to have, uh, Tori here with us as well, and with that, really, I'm just saying hi, so.
All right, well, I appreciate the opportunity to be out here, uh, so it's nice to come and be counsel, new faces, people that I haven't met. Um, just give you a quick overview for those who don't know me, I'm Scott Arnold, I've been with the police department for about twenty two years now. Uh, sergeant for the last five and for the last two years, I've been assigned over our CIT mental health unit. In our investigations division, so we currently have. Uh, three detectives and a social worker assigned to my division as well as our patrol CIT unit. So I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of an update on our mental health court and our social worker program. Um, just to kind of give you a little bit of a refresher in regards to our mental health court and what the mission of our mental health court is. Uh, it is a collaboration between law enforcement, our criminal justice system and mental health providers to provide additional resources to. Uh, those individuals that might be violators of criminal law, to help get them the proper treatment. Um, and other avenues to assist them rather than simply putting them into the same arrest. And imprisonment cycle that has existed for years and years. Uh, our mental health court provides them with additional resources that help them to obtain counseling, medications. And other tools and resources that are gonna help them break out of that cycle and hopefully no longer be consumers of. The police department's resources and the city's resources. Um, to qualify for our mental health court, you have to have both a qualifying offense, which means you have to have violated the law. Because this is a justice court level mental health court. Uh, and in fact is the only justice court mental health court in the entire state of Utah. Uh, we only take class B misdemeanors and below, uh, on occasion, we will look at class A violations and with the city attorney's approval, we will. Uh, take some of those class A violations to our mental health court. Uh, on top of having that qualifying offense, they have to have a qualifying diagnosis. Currently, we only accept, uh, five main mental health diagnoses in our mental health court, psychosis, schizophrenia. Schizophrenic disorder, major depression and bipolar. Uh, they have to go through a, an evaluation by a mental health, uh, provider to determine that they. Do have one of these qualifying diagnosis before we take them into our mental health court. We usually only take medium to high risk offenders, meaning people that without our, uh, interjection into, uh, what's going on. They're going to continue to repeat and continue to be, uh. In. A consumer of, uh, the police department services. Some of these people start becoming a, a burden on the police department where we're dealing with them. On a daily basis, sometimes multiple times a day, um, and a lot of times it is tied directly to their mental health and, and them being in crisis, so. Uh, it is a one hundred percent voluntary program for these individuals that enter our mental health court. Uh, they do immediately plead guilty, they enter probation and our officers do supervise them during their probation. Uh, we do have partnerships with the justice court here in West Valley as well as Salt Lake County probation. Uh, cornerstone counseling and other mental health, uh, resources throughout the community. So just to give you guys some statistics, uh, these statistics are from January first through July thirty first of this year. Uh, during that timeframe, we had sixteen probationers in our mental health court. We currently have eleven active probationers with our mental health court, we've had three that graduated. And two that are currently non-compliant and are sitting in jail, uh, thinking about becoming compliant. Uh, we have seven current referrals to our mental health court, these are people that have committed the crimes, we've referred them to the court. We are just simply waiting on them to go through the, uh, LSCMI, which is kind of like a pre-sentence. Uh, evaluation through the men, uh, through a mental health provider to determine that they do have the qualifying mental health diagnosis to qualify for our court. Uh, we did have four referrals to the court that simply didn't qualify this year, those are individuals that either were determined to be low risk. Uh, they didn't meet some of our initial requirements such as not living in Salt Lake County, um, or other, other issues that have popped up. We had four people that were referred to mental health court, but again, since it is voluntary, these are people that simply chose not to participate mental health court. And prefer that their case simply went through the standard justice court docket. Um, and we also have five people that were referred but have not taken any steps, uh, through this process and their cases are currently sitting. Uh, in warrant, waiting for them to get arrested, they'll be given another opportunity at that point, once they are arrested, to decide whether or not they want to participate mental health court. Um, but again, these are people that we just haven't been able to locate. Uh, as part of our mental health court, uh. Program, uh, we have our LCSW, our licensed clinical social worker, Tori Yates. Uh, Tori sitting over here, just to give you guys a little bit of background on Tori, we're lucky to have Tori, I'll be honest with you, she's. She's a rock star in the mental health community, uh, I've known Tori for. Probably seven, eight years, uh, since I first went through, uh, the first level of CIT training, so we're, we're really lucky to have Tori working here with us. Uh, she has over twenty years of mental health, uh, and substance abuse experience. Uh, she is currently an employee of the Huntsman Mental Health Institute, formerly known as uni. Um, she is a contracted employee of West Valley City and I got the date wrong on here. Um, she is a contracted employee of West Valley City and I got the date wrong on here. She's actually been with us since twenty eighteen. So uh, Tori's with us on uh rotating two-year contracts starting back in twenty eighteen. Uh, prior to coming to working for West Valley, she was part of the team that helped develop the Safe UT app. Which uh, if you're not aware of it, it's a online app that individuals can use to reach out and make contact with uh, online crisis individuals. So uh, they started implementing it into schools, starting from uh kindergarten on up through uh high school for kids that were in crisis, suicidal, whatever, they could reach out via text to a crisis worker. So she was part of that development of that app. She also worked with the MCOT unit, which is the mobile crisis outreach teams. These are uh, social workers that are trained in mental health that go out to individuals' homes to provide them with services during crisis. Um, she also worked for the suicide hotline and a variety of other roles during her time up there at the University of Utah. Uh, she's currently the mental health coordinator for CIT Metro, which our police department is a founding member of CIT Metro. Uh, she is the president and acting chair of the Utah chapter of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Uh, she's recently appointed to the state FOP board for officer wellness and she's on the survivors council at the medical examiner's office. So to just give you a little bit of overview of some of her roles and responsibilities uh within the police department and within our CIT program. Uh, the first and foremost is mental health court. Uh, what she does, she responds out with our mental health court detectives on all of our probationer visits. When somebody pleads into mental health court, they basically enter a probation agreement with us. Uh, rather than using adult probation and parole, part of our agreement with the justice court is that the police department would provide probation services. They go out and do home, home visits. The officers will search the home to see if the people are in violation of the conditions of their probation. While they're doing that, Tori's there on site to meet with our probationer, see how they're doing within their home life, meet with family members and other caregivers to see if there's resources that we can supply to them to help them be more successful in their probation and have a higher uh likelihood of success within our program. Uh, she works with the local treatment providers and the case managers to help them with probation compliance. Uh, she attends the court on a weekly basis and provides her clinical feedback to the judge and to the other uh mental health partners that are all part of court. Uh, on top of that, she also is part of our homeless outreach team here in West Valley City. She attends the homeless uh task force meetings on a weekly basis. She also works with our community policing unit uh to go out and do in-person homeless outreach. Uh, with COVID, that kind of has dipped off a little bit, but we do have plans to start having her have a much more active role in our homeless outreach with our CLP unit. Um, she also helps uh assist in developing and providing training for our police department uh and other agencies uh as part of our membership in CIT Metro. We uh, we host on a minimum two CIT academies a year here in West Valley City. Uh, we also partner with other CIT programs to teach at those academies throughout the year. Uh, last year, I think we did nine or ten academies in one year. Uh, we've scaled that number back this year quite a bit, but Tori instructs at each one of those and is a integral part in making sure that those happen. Uh, she also helps develop uh quarterly trainings put out to our officers as part of our post certification. There are certain requirements that the state of Utah requires that each of our officers meet each year. Part of those uh now have to be broken down and explained to post how many hours we put into each of our trainings with our officers. And part of that is mental health and autism training. So Tori helps develop those training programs that we push out to our officers to make sure that we're in compliance with the, with the state's uh mandatory training requirements for our officers. Uh, she's actually currently working with posts to help develop the new course curriculum for post for uh mental health for all officers that will go through the police academy. Um, on top of that, she reviews all of our police reports. Anytime we have an incident where an officer has taken somebody into custody on what we call a pink sheet or an involuntary commitment, place them into the hospital. Um, I review those reports and Tori also reviews those reports from a clinical standpoint to make sure that our officers were in compliance with state law when we committed those people into the hospital. Um, so we do utilize Tori quite a bit. She's kind of a jack of all trades. We use her in all sorts of places. Um, just to give you a little bit of statistics on this year on, on some of the stuff that Tori's done. Uh, again, these statistics are through the end of July of twenty twenty-two. We'd had about a hundred and twenty-nine, a hundred and thirty pink sheet cases, uh, meaning we're averaging about twenty people a month that our officers are pink sheeting into the hospital, which is pretty high. We, we deal with quite a few of these cases. So again, Tori reviews each one of those. Uh, again, she hasn't been as active on the homeless outreach as far as out in the field. So her homeless, uh, so the statistics there are a little low, right? We've, we've counted about nine in-person contacts, uh, although she is there with homeless task force every month. This is an area uh that we want to focus moving forward on increasing those numbers and having her more actively out there with our COP unit and with our mental health detectives uh having more contact with our homeless population to help provide them resources to see if we can't make an impact in that area. Um, one of the roles that we play in our CIT unit is threat assessments. Uh, anytime we receive a threat to a business within our community, a potential threat of a school shooting, um, threats against law enforcement, threats against city employees or the, or the council, whatever it might be, the mayor. Uh, our unit conducts a criminal threat assessment to determine the level of that risk and what action needs to be taken and whether or not there's any criminal charges. With each of those threat assessments, Tori conducts a clinical threat assessment uh to evaluate the mental uh state of the individual suspect in those threats. So up to this point, we've done about a dozen of those uh this year. We receive, depending it's hit and miss, sometimes we'll only get one a month and we just had two in the last week. So they, they pop up quite frequently and Tori takes uh that role in that, working with the detective who's assigned to that to provide her clinical insight on those threat assessments. Um, over the last year, she's taught multiple classes at, at numerous CIT academies as well as uh department-wide training. Uh, she is currently working with uh some of our legislators uh on some projects that we're wanting to look to go forward that are in the early early stages of those that she's gonna be working with the city on to help develop uh what we'd like to see as far as a statewide mental health database. Currently, we have multiple mental health providers throughout the state of Utah. However, none of those providers talk to each other and provide that information back and forth to each other. So a lot of times we have people that are slipping through the cracks and looking at some of these threat assessment type things that we deal with. Mass shooters and, and school shooting type things. These are people that we want to be able to make sure on, on the radar of mental health professionals. So she is working on a, a proposal to establish a statewide database uh so that these mental health providers can communicate back and forth with each other and have more up-to-date uh information. So, um. She also, again, works here with the department to provide the training, help us with some of the, the newer programs that we've implemented such as Project Safeguard and Culture City. So that is pretty much in nutshell of our mental health court uh program and our LCSW program and, and currently where we sit with that. If you have any questions for me.
Do you have any question for you?
So you're not very busy. It's a lot.
Yes, and uh again, we're lucky to have Tori. She's absolute rock star. We throw a ton on her plate. And she does a great job with everything that she's asked to do, never complains. Even though some days I don't know how she works with some of the detectives that she does, but she does a great job with it, very, very patient, holds their hand, makes sure that they understand that they're doing what they need to do. So.
Question, no, go ahead.
I, I was just going to mention, I, um, a few weeks ago, I attended a, um, a meeting for a chamber west and they brought in the police chiefs of different jurisdictions and they were talking about a I, I think it's a new concept called tactical retreat or tactical.
So it's, it's, it's gone by a number of names throughout the years, but it is kind of that hot topic phrase that they're trying to utilize. A lot of what it is, it, it stems from some legislative changes that have, changes that have been made to the officer use of deadly force statute. Uh, last year, the legislature changed the statute that basically states that if the individual in question in crisis is only presenting a threat to themselves, officers would not be justified in using deadly force. Um, so a lot of the training and the kind of standard operating procedures now when dealing with suicidal individuals uh is if they're there by themselves and they are only a threat to themselves. We may make a phone call to try to see if we can officer, officer, uh, offer resources. However, we're not going to push the issue any longer to where it could potentially turn into a force or deadly force situation with these individuals. And so that's what the tactical retreat is, is we evaluate the situation. If we determine that they're only a danger to themselves, then we're going to tactically retreat from the situation and not push the issue to where we could end up in a deadly force situation that now by law, we would not be justified in doing.
So that's the state law that all uh departments.
So, yeah, the, the law itself simply states that we would not be justified in using force against somebody who's only a threat to themselves. The tactical retreat is kind of a, a newer philosophy in regards to how to handle these types of suicidal situations so that we can walk away from these without uh utilizing force against these types of individuals. And it's something that we've actually incorporated here at West Valley long before they changed the, the law. Again, I've been a, a sergeant for five years and we've been kind of having this standard protocol within our department well beyond when I became sergeant five years ago. So uh, a lot of stuff when it comes to, not to pat ourselves too much on the back, but a lot of our stuff when it comes to mental health here in West Valley, we're well, well ha- ahead of the curve compared to most agencies. Um, a lot of that is, uh, again, the support from council and the city. Chief Jacobs has had, put a huge emphasis on CIT training and making sure our officers know how to deal with these types of individuals in crisis. Uh, we are one of the only and the only large agency in the state that has every single one of our officers uh CIT trained, which means every West Valley officer has gone through at least a minimum of forty hours of CIT training on how to deal with individuals in crisis. We're the only agency that's done that. Uh, Chief Jacobs has made it mandatory and we will continue that with every new officer that we bring in. We'll put them through one of these courses. We have probably the most advanced CIT program in the state of Utah as far as law enforcement goes. Uh, where we have full-time CIT officers on patrol that are, receive even additional training on top of that. We have two assigned to every shift and they primarily handle all mental health crisis calls. And then we have our investigations division of CIT, which most agencies don't have, plus our mental health court. Um, yeah, we're, we're doing things the right way when it comes to CIT and mental health here in West Valley and very well ahead of the curve. I know I attended a meeting today that uh is a program that Nicole's championing, the My Hometown Initiative uh that West Valley is involved with that is, is putting resources and individuals out there to help curtail some more mental health problems here in our community. Um, so yeah, we're, we're doing things the right way, well ahead of the curve and, and a lot of support from the city and, and the police department on this stuff. So it's great.
If we are comparing uh with the previous years, we are up or we are down and why?
As far as our encounters with individuals in crisis, I'd say we're probably up. Um, and I think a lot of that has a lot to do with the pandemic. I, I think nationwide and probably worldwide, we saw a massive increase in mental health crisis and mental health i- issues. Um, I was looking at some of the recent statistics and they say that uh, it's estimated somewhere in the neighborhood of now I'm gonna say it wrong, it's either forty or four hundred million people have some kind of mental illness in the United States. Um, so we encounter that on a daily basis, multiple times a day. Uh, I would say good fifty percent of our calls that we deal with have some component that you could potentially tie back to mental illness, whether it's substance abuse or other related issues. It may not be the main underlying reason why our officers are out there, but it is a reason. Um, statistics show that anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent of all law enforcement deadly force shootings are uh, individuals that are in mental health crisis. So it is something that we deal with on quite a regular basis, but I'd say our numbers are currently up. Um, as far as how many people we are encountering that are experiencing crisis.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, you have a question?
Yeah, um, sorry. So I just want to applaud you for, for this great work and and chief and, and uh this, this is exactly what we need to be doing and and I'm excited for the next thing that you guys are gonna do too, that just to take it further. Um, I saw that you had three graduates from the mental health court. I hate to put you on the spot, Tori, but would you mind telling us a story about one of them?
You can come to the, the mic.
We've had a couple that have been, uh, I guess you would say very mentally ill. Um, they fit into that kind of persistent mental illness. So, um, people who are very, very sick when they're not on their medications. Um, one of them is, fits into that category very well. Um, diagnosed with schizophrenia, very doesn't take much to really have this person really slip off, off the um, stable train, I guess you could say. And so working with um this individual along with the family and really making sure that there's wraparound services. So like Sergeant Arnold mentioned, not only do we deal with um the individual in mental health court, but we deal with the whole family system to make sure that they have as much success opportunities as possible. So whether that's looking at the family and going, okay, is the family getting burned out? Because this, it takes a lot, if you know, if you have anybody in your family who has a mental health issue, working with them and trying to get them stable, trying to make sure that they stay stable can be very, very, very difficult. And so making sure that the family has the resources that they need so that they can then support the individual and make sure that they can be successful. Um, typically, we're working with these families for a minimum of a year. Their probation is only a year. It's a misdemeanor, so not a terribly long period of time. Um, but there's amazing work that we can do within that year as long as the person's willing to meet us halfway. Um, we do a lot of, a lot of opportunities for change, but unless they're there and this individual in particular was in a place in their lives where they were willing to change because they had been through the system quite a few times. So they, it's kind of a, they're not, you know, this is not their first rodeo with this kind of stuff. And give it, but it was the first time they were given this opportunity to do mental health work. Um, and so working with them, working closely with the, the outpatient treatment providers and making sure that one of my biggest roles is providing them back the feedback that, okay, this is what you're hearing in therapy. This is what I'm seeing in the house. And if those two things don't match, that we're able to close that loop for people. And so making sure that that happens ensures that people are gonna be very successful or as success, as successful as they're willing to be, I guess. That's probably the best way to put it. But yeah. So we've, we've had some, that case in particular, we haven't seen um them back through the system. As far as I know, they haven't had any other police contacts. So um, right now, we're considering that a success. But we also know that this person really needs to stay on their meds and, and continue to do what they're doing um to continue that success. So it's really up to them at this point. So that kind of answer, yeah, without giving too much information.
Just to add to that, um, current statistics show that our Utah state prison, prison population has a forty-six percent recidivism rate for individuals to reoffend within twelve months of being released from, from prison. Our mental health court, while I don't have the specific numbers, but I would guess that our mental health court recidivism rate within that first year is probably less than ten percent. Now, I, I'd love to say it's zero and that we never have a problem with any of these people ever again, but we've had individuals that we were dealing with on a multi-time a week basis and people that were in crisis constantly, that they weren't medicated, they weren't doing the things they needed to. Our officers were getting in vehicle pursuits with them or use of force type situations and we get them into our mental health court. And uh, we had one individual that, once he graduated successfully, we didn't hear a peep from him for three years before he reviolated. Uh, now he kind of got off his meds and went off the rails and now we're trying to rework him back into the system and get him the help that he needs again, but uh, compared to the standard recidivism rate, I think the people that we see in our mental health court are reoffending at a much, much lower rate than they would if we were simply throwing them into the standard justice system without getting them the treatment that they need.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Sergeant Scott Arnold and uh, Tori appreciated very much and it's a great work you, you have done, a wonderful for our city. Thank you so much. Yeah. Uh, next one, that's the council calendar. Any question for that one? If not, we're gonna move along to a potential new business here, potential future agenda items.
Excellent.
Okay, go ahead.
Attended the Utah League of Cities and Towns this morning and they spoke about the investment infrastructure and jobs act a little bit and how what those funds could be used for. Have we applied for any or do we plan on applying?
I want to say yes, but I'll have to get back and, and double check to see if it's specifically we have. I'm almost positive we have, but I couldn't tell you what specific projects.
Next item is uh council reports. Yeah, launch.
Don and I attended a groundbreaking out at Northwood Crum. Um, a, a great event. The governor was there, some representatives. It's a, it's good to see them grow and have the support of our, of our city. Um while I was there, I, I had a little side conversation with Eric Hutchins, who works now with, for Salt Lake County, and he shared with me just not the details, but some overall statistics that he's discovered. He's been um tasked with with looking at the statistics for crimes and, and especially with the youth and, and gangs and uh he used to keep track of in which municipality w- were the crimes occurring. Now he's looking at where the perpetrator's home address is. And uh, and he said that uh in almost all the municipalities, the, the crimes are going up for perpetrators from those areas. Except in West Val.
Right.
And in West Valley uh our residents, especially the youth and, and gang type crimes are, are going down. And so that's, it was exciting. I, I think uh some of it might have to do with uh my hometown. Um and maybe the chief can enlighten us on some other things that she's doing. Thought that was exciting.
That's great. Uh good news. Yeah. A- anybody else?
Just a follow-up on, I got my utility bill this last week. And it had calendar of, I think, two and a half months on there. So that was a great improvement. Thank you.
Great. Good adjustment. Well, gonna, item C right there, we're gonna turn over to uh, I believe is a special RDA is us uh Jackson, before you want to say something before Jackson take over?
Only thing I would say, you just raised your.
Oh, the fir- the first one is Mark, the second one is Nicole, and the third one will be Jeff.
Okay, so and to that point, uh sir, the first one is really just a recap of the same loan. And promissory note, sort of discussion we were talking about earlier with the Maverick Center. So if you need more information on that, that'd be great, but I know we're running on time. So maybe we should go over the other two items first, which are Nicole with uh hometown scholars agreement and Mr. Jackson with the real estate purchase, if you'd rather.
Okay.
Okay, uh Nicole.
Thank you, counsel, Nicole Cottle uh with the admin. I'll be quick. Um you're all familiar with the hometown scholar program that we do in partnership with the University of Utah. Um this is a, a annual re-up of that uh as just by way of numbers. Um this year will assist fifty-five West Valley City, University of Utah students. Um this money comes from the um the set aside from our RDA that's required for uh affordable housing. So what we do in partnership with the University of Utah is we close the gap for our um students here and make sure that all of them have basically what, what uh is akin to full ride scholarships. But our portion of that becomes their housing so that we can use those funds in the appropriate way. Um these are all first generation West Valley City students. Uh what they agree to if they take our hometown scholarship um opportunity is to uh sort of remain in the city. Um as you know, we can't uh bind people to the city, but we encourage them to stay at least as long as they've used our um scholarship. To date, we've graduated ten students and this year we will graduate another twenty-four, so we'll be at thirty-four students. Um they are all here still in the city. There are two that will be going away to their master's programs across the country in the next little bit. But um in the time that we've had the scholarship here and graduated students over the years, they have remained in the city, which is a um a big deal and a huge win and all of them intend to do that into the future. As you saw, also, we have uh twenty-five students who've been involved in, in uh internships with businesses here in our city, which is a good way to also encourage those um students to stay with us. As you're also aware, in November, we have um these students usually come to the council in person, or at least some of them that are able to come and um say thank you and introduce themselves and talk a little bit, a little bit about themselves. So that typically happens in November for them. Um they're just starting school right now, or they, I think, would all be here tonight as well. Very um grateful and very uh wonderful students that we have in the program and a great partnership we enjoy with the University of Utah. We did see us, we are recommending to the council a slight increase in the amount this year due to the increase in affordable housing costs out there in the world in order to maintain our level of um our level of commitment and the number of students that we have uh aligned for this year, we needed to do that increase. So it's a hundred and eighty. And again, this is RDA housing funds used for the affordable housing side of the student housing. Can answer any questions?
These are all first year or first generation.
Yes.
College students, so their first ones in their family.
Yes.
We've got some of them going on to master's degrees.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah.
We have a, have done a great job for, for their families. I think it's a great, a chance they'll live forever.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good. It's a Jackson.
Uh Jeff Jackson, West Valley City Redevelopment Agency. Super excited to bring to you guys a couple of purchases of a couple of duplexes along Lehman. I wanted to point out to you guys uh a plan that was commissioned and adopted by the city council back in two thousand and twelve. And I just want to point out and applaud the vision the council had back in two thousand and twelve, because if you'll notice, most of this was just a plan in two thousand and twelve. And this gives us a chance to see, with the exception of Embassy Suites, it was planned, um how far we've come and you know, Fairborn Station kind of stands as an example in the state of how to do really good redevelopment and how um a city council and a staff can put together a good plan and exa- execute on that. I'm, I'm here to, and I wanted to point that out because as I was looking at this acquisition, um it occurred to me um how far we've come. And now if you move along to the future plan, um in the green, I want to point out that we've acquired in the yellow. Um if you go back to this other map, you'll see um you had it up for a quick second. There you go. There you go. In the yellow, these are the acquisitions that we've made over the, over time um to prepare for this future development and to continue on with the plan that was adopted in twenty twelve. The blue are the ones that we're acquiring now. Um we're super grateful for the seller. We've, we've put together a really great creative um negotiation and contract with him to purchase and take down over the next five years. That works out really great for us. We can take title immediately. But it gives us five years to close down on that um, on that project. We're super excited to continue to see Fairborn's uh Fairborn Station continue to redevelop. And um I'll take any questions.
Any question for him?
One point two million for two duplexes.
Correct.
What's the market value on those?
Uh the market val- we're right at the market value. That includes some closing costs. Yeah.
I don't think it's quite that high, but.
But look at the area, it could be so close to the, to be so close to the offices and, and medical and um and the mall. This is, this is area that's developing soon. Has pretty good future value. But I'm not an expert.
I agree. Future value, it is the current values.
I'll throw one thing out. Um highest and best use, long-term use here. You know, the office tower where we have nine stories, you know, that's a long-term sort of vision. And so if you, if you look at what you purchased that for in twenty sixteen, we closed on that and what it has become, the value is completely flipped upside down. So we want to make sure that we keep in, in, in mind the long-term vision of this area.
You want to talk a little bit about the process you used on these properties for market valuation, Joe?
Yes, yeah, we, we, we take comps from around the area. Um we evaluate and estimate sort of what you know, it's hard to always know what we're going to do here because we'll bring a plan. Once we have um put together a sizable um assemblage of properties, we'll bring together, bring forth a plan to the city council to adopt. Um and, and along this lane, we've had opportunities along the way to purchase things, but they haven't been within the market value. This one is much, fits way, you know, way much, way more within that value as we see it. And so we, we, we feel like it's the best thing. And over five years, it's a great takedown opportunity.
Thanks for that. And a question I wanted to ask you is the, the contract for five, five-year contract is a one end or back end? You know what I'm saying?
It's pretty even. Yeah, we have a hundred thousand upfront and then we get into two hundred two, two forty-nine, two thirty-eight, two thirty-seven, or two twenty-eight over the five-year period of time. And we can close at any time. So it saves us interest along the way.
Okay. And when we, when we purchase that one, how long?
Um the, the, it's, it's up for approval today or next week. Yep.
Uh not today. I mean, you're
Next week.
About today, but yeah, the special meeting is what?
Any other question for Jeff Jackson?
Hey, thank you.
And oh, thank you. Um we don't have any uh closed session tonight? No, right?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. So one motion, so we can close this meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you so much and to soon. Uh all those fireworks and this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we adjourn. Let's go to the next one.